Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024 Tom Water City Council Meeting. We will start with roll call.
Councilmember Leata Dahlhoff.
She is excused this evening.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
I don't see her online right now, so we will check back.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I'm present, and you do have Councilmember Dahlhoff is absent, correct? Yes. All right, with that, we will go ahead and do our salute to our flag. All right, we have a couple of special items. The first one is Tom Water Hopes reintroduction to the community partners by Courtney Fuller, and she is Coalition Coordinator, and welcome Courtney.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here. I wanted to say thank you in particular to Lisa, and to Brittany, and also to Angela for allowing me to be here tonight. I am Courtney Fuller. I am the Coalition Coordinator for two different prevention coalitions in the Thurston County area. And so I wanted to kind of take just a minute to reintroduce us, and because people don't seem to know who we are. So I started in January of this year, on January 2nd, in Thurston County with two different coalitions. The first one is Tom Water Hopes, and the other one is the Bukota Tonino Healthy Action Team. Tom Water Hopes stands for Tom Water, Healthy Opportunities for Prevention, Empowerment, and Success. And both coalitions really are here to help our age group of 10 to 14-year-old youth for prevention of misuse and abuse of drugs and alcohol and nicotine. So with that, I just want to kind of give a quick overview. The hearsay history, and please bear with me if I'm using acronyms, I will try my best to not use them at all. I could do this whole presentation in acronyms, so. I currently work for the Education Service District 113, just down the street, and they are funded by the Community Prevention Wellness Initiative, CPWI, underneath the Healthcare Authority. So we get our funding from the Healthcare Authority. It's really the big takeaway from that. In 2011, they decided that Healthcare Authority decided that they wanted to start doing this Community Prevention Wellness Initiative because they had already seen that there are lots of areas in which there was a need and a readiness to talk about ATOD prevention, so ATOD being alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. For those of you who don't know, it's an old-term school, sorry. Way back there. So in 2000, prior to 2011, they did some surveys, and in 2011, they said, well, there are a few communities in Washington State that really are ready to have some help with prevention, let's give them some money. And so Cohort One started in 2011, and that was in Bukota Tonino. They were the, one of the very, very, very first. After that, the CPWI, the Community Prevention Wellness Initiative says that they would like to provide substance abuse prevention services and strategies through local coalitions and high-need communities, so you can have their little spiel. Between 2001 and 2016, Cohort One showed that there was a huge decrease in both family and community risk factors, and also in alcohol, and binge drinking, and tobacco, and other drug use as well. So once they showed that, they said, well, let's keep on going. So they gave us money in 2011. They've continued to do so until now. And we implement programs that are evidence-based for the most part, and I'll come back to that in just a minute, but we're really community-focused on those. We are currently in over 100 communities, and we are in all nine service districts, and we are, gosh, there's only, there's 100 of us, so there's only a few of us. Prevention in Washington State is a really, really big thing. And so I think it's really kind of cool to be involved in this and looking at what does prevention mean. So I'll go to there in just a minute, too. We have people in schools that are called a Student Assistance Professionals, so we work, I work in the community. I am a community coordinator. So I work out in the community with all of you. We have student assistance professionals as well that are in our schools, and they work in the middle school in particular, and they're there to find people who need help. Maybe they need a little assistance, maybe they need counseling, they need referral services. So the Community Prevention Wellness Initiative also funds a lot of their job, too. So we have people in the school working with 10 to 14-year-olds, and then we also have people outside of the schools working with 10 to 14-year-olds. I'm sure you all know what a community coalition is, but my quick thing is, we're a bunch of people who come together to make something happen, right? So I'm not going to give you my full definition. Don't think we need it. Also not going to give you the whole process of how we do this, but essentially, we bring in data, right? We do, there's a Healthy Youth Survey, there are community surveys, there are all kinds of other surveys out there. What we do then, as a coalition, as a group, is we take that information, and we analyze and assess that data, and find what gaps we would have in the community, and what resources we have in the community. We then take that information, and we do some planning. This sounds familiar, right, for everybody? Planning, we implement, we evaluate, it's like the same thing over and over and over again. So what we try to do then is we try and take all of, all the data that we get, and we look at those gaps. We look at the things that have decreased in our numbers, where do we need more assistance? And then we come to the coalition and the community and say, what do you all want to see? How can we best help your youth? How can we help the youth in the community to reach their full potential and be healthy and happy people as we go forward? How do we decrease the use, and how do we help mitigate the misuse and abuse of drugs and alcohol in our teens? So with that, actually, both coalitions, the two coalitions, the Bukota Tonino Healthy Action Team, and the Tom Water Hopes Team, both do the same thing. They're just in two different communities. Under the Education Service District, we also have a third coalition, which is out in Elma. We currently have three coalitions that are underneath the umbrella of the ESD. And what we're trying to do right now is combine all of our efforts to kind of, I don't want to use this, I'm going to use it anyway, the word saturate, to really saturate the community of, there are resources. Did you know that we have resources? Do you know where they are? What other resources do we need, and how can I help bring that in? What kind of education do we need? What kinds of laws do we need? What kind of policies do we need? What do we do to go forward and continue to make our community a better, better place to go? So I am going to give, there are seven goals and objectives, and I'm, it's very exciting, very exciting. These cover both coalitions, so the first one is to increase community readiness. Are we even ready to talk about issues that we have? A lot of people say yes, and there's a lot of people who say absolutely not. So that's one of our first ones. The second one is to decrease our laws and norms that are favorable to alcohol and tobacco and nicotine use. So there are a lot of people who, and then increase the perception of risk. So smoking, right, smoking tobacco, smoking cigarettes for a long time was just looked at as something that people did. Then they started realizing what was going on. We started decreasing the access, and we started to increase perception and the harm of cigarettes. So that's kind of where we are with this as well. It's really educating the public on alcohol, tobacco, nicotine, other drugs, and about brain chemistry. Our brains don't develop until we're 25, 26, and so talking to the youth about what your brain is doing and how it's doing that has really impacted them a lot as well. So we are also trying to decrease initiation of use, decrease availability of all those fun things, decrease favorable attitudes, like, everybody in the world drinks. I'm going to a party tonight, and 95% of us drink. No, you don't, at all. So our survey numbers say, and I don't have the actual numbers in front of me, so please don't quote me on this one. It may be more like 89% of our youth do not drink. So how can we change that norm? How can we look at this differently? If you are a child who is in school and you are drinking with your friends, you probably think everybody drinks. But if you step out of that circle, there's only a few. So really trying to understand the favorable attitudes and where that's coming from. And then with that, as well as increasing bonding skills. We have a lot of kids, especially after COVID, that don't have a lot of places to go, they don't have a lot of friends, they, you know, they just don't know what to do. So how can we increase that bonding? How can we give them other things to do that they want to go and do? And I think that's the bigger thing, is what did they want to do, not do, what do we think they should do, right? So it's including them as well. And then increasing family healthy beliefs and attitudes. So we work with different programs to bring in evidence-based programming. So we bring in like Guiding Good Choices and Strengthening Families, and we bring in documentaries called Screenagers, and we bring in other things that have been around for a long time to show that they do have an impact in the ATOD use decreasing. So we're partnering with people with that as well. So we work with 12 different sectors of the community. We work with youth, we work with parents, we work with all of you, we work with pretty much everybody. And I'm really trying right now to forge relationships with more of the community partners. So Parks and Rec, Family Education Services, Support Services, anybody who's out there that wants to be involved and is already helping youth, I'm trying to just connect with as well. My side note on partnership, because I want everybody to be a partner, is not that I'm asking you for anything in particular. I don't want your money. I just want your ideas. So if you're interested in any of that, please let me know. I understand that being here, there's a lot of partnerships that are like, okay, well, you're going to give us money, and we're going to give you money, so then what do we do? I am not that kind of partner. I want to do for you. I want us to get out there, and I want us to be a collaborative effort. So I'm not looking for anything that says, hi, I have money, I can give you money, or, you know, whatever. It's really, it's truly a partnership and a collaboration in the community. We also work really closely with the school districts, both Tonino School District and Tom Water School District. So this last year, we put on a showing, a documentary of Screenagers in both school districts, actually. And Screenagers is a documentary that talks about youth mental health, drug use, bullying, screen time. And so how do we look at our screen time that the youth are using? How often are they on it, and how can we help move them away from that and actually have conversations with each other? So some of the things that we are doing now are that we are implementing a few different campaigns over this next year. Again, they'll be in both Tonino, Bukota, and Tom Water, and hopefully, in Elma as well. And so those are things hopefully you'll see around, things that I just mentioned, like the, you know, 80-some-odd percent of people don't drink. Those are considered positive community norms, and it's a huge campaign that we'll be pushing forward. Is to really, again, look at this. It's not, you know, we have so many drunk drivers on the road. Yeah, but 99% of people aren't driving drunk on the road. So yes, there is absolutely a reason for us to pay attention, right? There's also a reason for us to understand the good behind it. And so how do we figure out how to deal with all those other things that are going on out there? So we have a bunch of different campaigns. There is, it starts with one campaign that is also related with medicine takeback. So in October and in April, we will be combining forces with Police Department, DEA, the Liquor Control Board, to actually bring out lock boxes and take back medications. Some of you may already know this. It's been happening for years and years and years. But really trying to be really active with that. We're also trying really hard to be active in the community and getting to know people and putting our names out, so. Any kind of resource fair, any kind of thing that's happening in the schools. I specifically work with Bush Middle School and Tonino Middle School, in particular because they have that youth age group of 10 to 14. So anything we can do to bring in assemblies for them and information to them, new programming to them, more family courses, whether it be strengthening families or guiding good choices or something else, just so we really can continue to build that community up. And that's, that's my overview. It's a very quick overview of what a community coalition is, but the biggest, the biggest takeaway is that we are community-built. We're everywhere. And really, we're not in the school, we're in the communities, and we're here to support the age groups of 10 to 14 by working with our community to do so. So we're partnering with everybody and anyone who wants to, and any community person, they don't need to have kids. I have a community coalition for a youth organization, and I don't have children. But I have hundreds of children, right? So I look at this as how can I also help improve our areas in the ways that the community wants to? It's not mine, it's the community organization. So really just trying to put it out there, trying to increase our capacity, increase happiness and community, and hopefully decrease use of drugs and alcohol. There is some information on the back here, if you'd like some. My business card is back here, too. And there are two, they look the same, but there's Tom Water and there's the Bukota One-Pager, so if you need a little bit more clarity of what we do. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Oh, we have a question for one of our councilmembers. Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks. I'm really interested in what you had to say about the data analysis and sort of synthesizing the different surveys that happened. Now Healthy Youth Survey is every two years. Some of those other ones are every year. Is there sort of a timeline, or when do you expect kind of like when the next batch of data comes, if things typically happen at the end of the school year?
Perfect. Thank you very much for asking. I am in the process right now. We have received the Healthy Youth data. I have not disseminated it yet. So to be perfectly honest with you, both coalitions have had a really rough go for the last couple of years, and really hoping that we can just kind of be here and move forward. So with that, the last six months have been a bit of a challenge to kind of get us to meet all of our deliverables and do everything, and now, to answer your question, is the time I get to look at data. So we are pulling together, we have an epidemiologist for the Department of Health is on our coalition, Angela Jefferson's on our coalition. We have some other people who are out there as well, who are willing and interested in actually being able to give information and help out in those areas. I'm not going to throw you in there. Or in front of anything. But we, the thing with that is that we take in the Healthy Youth Survey, we take in Department of Health epidemiology numbers, we take in coroner numbers, EMS, police, school district numbers, anything that we can get our hands on, we pull in and say what's really going on. And what's going on in the county, but then what's also going on in the two specific places? So Tonino and Tom Water, as you all know, are completely different, right? They're very, very, very different. So really looking at that school data and that community data to figure out where we need to go. So hopefully, by September, we will have it all wrapped up in a pretty little package.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Great. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment. Thank you for your work on this. I was on the original when they first formed all of the coalitions, so. And the data at the time was really staggering as far as the results that we were getting. And so it looks like some of the numbers have started to go down.
Yes.
And I was just curious if we're still seeing that, like the after-effects of COVID, as far as how the kids that were in lockdown for two years, if we're still seeing repercussions from that.
Yeah, I think we're going to continue to see it, and I, going back to one of the survey questions, I have been very hesitant. I've been in the position for a couple of years, so I'm new to here, but I'm not new to the position. And I've watched all of the numbers across the state go down, for the most part. They dropped drastically after COVID, like drastically. That gives me pause. Right? Because we did the same survey, but now our numbers are like 8% instead of way up here. Like it just doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't compute, it doesn't compute. I don't understand how that happens. So I've asked questions multiple times at this point of like, how do we deal with our surveys? How do we know that they're actually really working? Well, the Healthy Youth Survey has been around for many, 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 many years. It's been flushed out many times. It follows a cohort all the way through. So if you're in sixth grade and you take it, then you take it in eighth, you take it in 10th, and you take it in 12th grade. That information hasn't really changed. So I can't even believe I'm saying this. I trust the survey data, which is probably really good, right? I should be trusting it, but I don't always try, there's always so many things that come and go from that. And so I feel really confident, at least at this point in time, saying, because we've followed the same things for so long, there is definitely a decrease in our alcohol, nicotine, and drug use across the board in Washington State. Will it spike up again? Will those numbers come back up again? I don't know. There are a lot of kids who are still not in school. They're either being homeschooled or they're just MIA. So I also, with that caveat, will say that I do think there are probably kids who are missing in those surveys, right? And I don't know if those are the kids who are, should be marking yes, or they should be marking no. So I think it's really just continuing to follow those trends. And going back to it, if you're a youth, what do you need? How can I help you? What do you need from us? And so whether the survey information shows it or doesn't show it, that's really the reach out, is how do we get to our youth and find out what they really want? Not just what we think they need. Thank you for asking.
Great, thank you. Uh, sir. Yeah. Sir. Sir. You could ask a question afterwards, and so only public comments from. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. Next item is the Davis Meeker Gary Oak Tree RFQ briefing, and Lisa Parks will be giving the briefing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be looking back and forth between my paper and the, and you all, so I may be having to do this with my glasses. It's becoming more and more frustrating as the years go on. So if you want to share the presentation, please. So this is just an update for the council members on what we've been doing since the June 4th council meeting, specifically reviewing with you the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications that we are intending to issue tomorrow. So essentially, on June 4th, the mayor responded to both council member concerns, as well as a huge outpouring from the community expressing support for the Davis Meeker Gary Oak Tree. And Mayor Sullivan agreed at that meeting to have a second Level 3 tree risk assessment completed. So since that time, staff's been researching the best approach. And although we're not required to do a request for qualifications, the project is not expected to cost the amount of money that would trigger a requirement for a request for qualifications. The research that we've conducted helped determine that we feel like that's the best process moving forward. So in terms of how we came to that conclusion, we did do research. I reached out to two cities that have urban forestry management programs. I reached out to the city of Olympia, as well as the city of Seattle. I sent emails to Jason Johns, who's the Urban Forestry Management Program Director for the city of Olympia. And I sent an email to Darren Morgan, who is the Seattle Department of Transportation Urban Forestry Management Program Lead. And I basically requested three different things. I asked them if they had examples of RFQs. Because tree risk assessments don't generally cost, hit that dollar threshold that require that, they didn't have those examples. But they both talked and were able to answer questions regarding what were appropriate minimum qualifications for a consulting arborist to perform the work, and what were some of the minimum components of the work in order to provide the highest level of risk assessment. So from then, from there, we actually have prepared the Request for Qualifications, and that is in the council members' packets. So in terms of the professional requirements that we are looking at, the recommendation of both arborists that I contacted, the urban forestry program managers that I contacted, suggested that there be an ISA Board Certified Master Arborist. That is the highest level of certification offered by ISA. It requires that the candidate pass an extensive scenario-based exam, and obligates those who achieve the certification to abide by a code of ethics and ensuring the quality of their work. To be eligible to take that exam, they are required to be an ISA Certified Arborist in good standing, and they have to either have, they have to have one of the following. They have to have measurable experience, some form of formal education, some related credentials, or some professional experience that brings them to the standard to be able to take that test. We also are requiring that the person be tree risk assessment qualified. That's a training course that's offered specifically to demonstrate professional knowledge in tree risk assessment processes. It requires a passing of a two-part exam, a written exam that has 100 multiple-choice questions, and then it's actually a performance-based exam as well. So somebody, you are required to go out and actually do a tree risk assessment to be completed within a one-hour timeframe. To be eligible to take that exam and participate in that class, you're required to either be an ISA Certified Arborist, an ISA Board Certified Master Arborist, or to have a degree in some related field, whether that's urban forestry, traditional forestry, or horticulture, some field of that nature. We're also asking that the consultant be experienced in performing Level 3 tree risk assessments using the standards that are outlined in a specific tree care standards document. That document is approved by the American National Standards Institute. It's comprehensive standards that address tree care practices, and those standards are what is, are used, for example, as the final authority in a US civil court system. We're also asking that the person that conducts this report be experienced in high-value risk management assessments, and that they are experienced with modern tree assessment techniques such as sonic tomography, aerial inspection and evaluation in high stems and branches, and various decay testing methodologies. Additionally, there is an organization called the American Society of Consulting Arborists. They have a program for registered consulting arborists. We are asking that this person be a registered consulting arborist, according to the American Society of Consulting Arborists, and we're asking that they be located within 250 miles of Tom Water. This organization is primarily, is a high-quality credentialing organization as well. To be eligible to become a registered consulting arborist, you're required to be a member, but you're also required to be a graduate of their consulting academy and to meet continuing education requirements. And on the ASCA website, it actually has a search tool that allows us to identify, you put in your search criteria, in this case, I put 250 miles radius from this, from our zip code, and I received 55 different names of registered consulting arborists. That's the list that's provided in the council's packet, and those are the people that we'll be sending the RFQ to. So then the scope of work, we're asking for them to conduct, again, a Level 3 tree risk assessment. We want to understand the likelihood of failure, potential failure in the future of branches or portions of the tree. We want to understand the likelihood of failure of any of those potential failures impacting a target in the general area. And then from there, we get a categorization of risk. And so we want to understand what the categorization, categorization of that risk is. And then we're asking for recommendations from the person who would be preparing and signing the report. So our, excuse me, our timeline for requests for qualifications, we're going to issue the RFQ tomorrow. We'll send it out to the list of 55 people via email. We are asking that by July, July 18th, they submit their statement of qualifications. July 19th, if we need to, we'll select a list of firms to interview, conduct those interviews on July 23rd if necessary, and we hope to select a firm by the 24th of July. That gives us a little, about a week to perform and get a contracting complete with that entity, hoping to have that assessment started by August 1st. And our hope tonight was that if the council had any feedback on the Request for Qualifications, that you give us that feedback, and we can potentially incorporate that before we send it out tomorrow. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
All right, I see Councilmember Von Holtz, and then I'll go to Councilmember Althouser.
I just have a couple of questions. You said that you reached out to Olympia and the city of Seattle, but did you happen to reach out to any of the cities and that we've learned have updated their policies to protect heritage trees? And then my second, it's not really a question, it's a request. In the last sentence of Section 1 of the RFQ, I think we should remove or change that last sentence. It leans toward the city standing by its decision, and may cause an organization that we choose to take on this second opinion to lean towards what the city has already decided. So we've lost some trust here, and I think that it would be important to at least fix that sentence, if not remove it completely.
Thank you. In answer to your first question, no, I did not reach out to any of the other jurisdictions. The city of Bellingham is the one specifically that was provided in terms of their code. Their legacy tree code is recently adopted. It is, it is similar to what we already have in our heritage tree program. My specific request to the arborists were, I wanted to find arborists who could answer questions about tree risk assessments, as opposed to necessarily asking them about code provisions.
All right, Councilmember Althouser, and then Councilmember Cathy.
Thanks. One of the, I think, concerns that was raised at the hearing we had last month was that sonic tomography is limited in terms of a technology compared to other technologies for analyzing the tree. I don't, I think that was the one where you. I don't, I think that was the one where you create a disturbance at the bottom of the tree and measure how sound travels up the tree, that there are other methods for being more precise for measuring decay further up the trunk. Do you, this language specifically calls out sonic tomography, but does leave room for, say, other inspection methods? So is it, I guess, I think that it's good that we're doing sonic tomography, but my piece of feedback would be, we're doing that, and we're trying to get a comprehensive assessment. We also require the other methods that were previously described. Like sonic tomography seems like a good tool to use, but that there are additional tools that could also be deployed. Will that be considered in the evaluation as well?
Yes, a couple of things. I believe what you're referring to is actually the process of what is, I believe, termed sounding, which is where you hit. Okay, so sonic tomography actually includes attaching electrodes to the base of the tree or to the exterior of the tree, and it is one of the more advanced technologies. What has, what, what previously occurred is that there was only one location that the sonic tomography was performed in, at the base of the tree. It is possible that you can do that up and down the, the main stem, probably into the branches, I would presume. The idea here was to say, we are looking for someone who can perform advanced methodologies, and we're not going to supplant our view of their methodologies, and we would recommend that, we want them to recommend to us how to complete the most thorough Level 3 risk assessment possible. So yes, it is left open on purpose.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. So did, did we, are we asking these folks to use any of the previous assessments that we've had, or any of the comments of local arborists, or anything like that? Or has, have none of those been considered or contacted?
I, there's like, three or four questions in there. So the reason that we reached, the reason that I reached out to the urban forestry program managers is to understand how best to get a true neutral third-party consultant to be able to perform this work. And so that is the reason why we are going with the registered consulting arborist categorization, as well as all of those other requirements that are in the, in the Request for Qualifications. I think you asked something else. Councilmember Kathy, I don't, can you?
I, yeah. So you reached out to Olympia. We had already reached out to Olympia to, and they weighed in very heavily on this previously. And so I'm asking if there are any other people who weighed in on this, or whose, whose work, previous work or comments are going to be considered in choosing the next person or persons who do this? Or was it, as you looked at the list or whatever was written about these people?
So the reason that I reached out to both Jason Johns as well as Darren Morgan is because they're urban forestry program managers, and what I was looking for was their recommendation on the types of qualifications that would be appropriate for somebody to do the work. And that's what I was provided. It didn't, it wasn't asking them about whether or not there should be a review of the report. It wasn't, I wasn't asking them how it should be done in, in terms of this particular report. It was a much more generalized question. Jason John did offer that, generally speaking, it's not uncommon. I'll, I'll read you what his email response says.
Thank you.
Says, "Blind peer review of work is not uncommon in arbicultural, arboriculture." However, the review must return to the earlier work and reconcile any contradictions with earlier findings." That's his estimation. I'm not going to tell this arborist, we're hiring somebody based on qualifications. That's what Request for Qualifications means. We're not, we're going to leave to them the process of identifying for us how best to accomplish that work. If that means that they review Kevin McFarland's report, that they review the email from Jason Johns, that they review the testimony of Beowulf Brower's, if they review the testimony of Ray Gleason, that is going to be up to them to conduct the work in the manner in which it is, they are credentialed to do so. And, and we're not going to set the conditions of that. We're asking for the qualifications of the person who's doing the work. We're telling them what we need the report to address, and we're letting them tell us through the process of selecting them what it is that they're, how they, they are proposing to accomplish that work.
Very good. So will the city then, how will, how will they access everything that has been done prior and, and which would include some of, you know, the concerns of, of some of us and of the public? And how will they access that? Will the city make that available to them to look at?
If, if they request that information, we will provide it to them, absolutely. It's typical to set up a process with a consultant where you, you've got a kickoff meeting, you talk about the project, you identify what's been done, they ask for data, and you provide that data, and they go forth and do their work. So if they request it, we will provide them with whatever information they ask for.
Okay. Thank you. I hope they know. But the other, and the other thing that I wanted to mention is often urban foresters are, don't always deal with the heritage trees or the legacy forest trees or so forth. So I'm sorry that we didn't reach out to Bellingham or to people who've already, already been through this or done it. And a couple of times I've suggested, King County did a whole thing on this, and I know their executive, and they put a lot of time and energy into a tree ordinance in their county. So if along the way, there's any, any more information needed or something, I would suggest, as councilmember, point has done, that we, or they, or all of us, look at what some other cities have done for, for a guideline, because I think this calls definitely for us as a city and us as councilmembers to look at our tree ordinances and our things, which we, we are hopefully going to do, but I think this calls for, you know, a more in-depth and, and broader, a broader thing to look at. So I appreciate the, the work that, that you've done, and I hope that this is done thoroughly and clearly, and, and I'm sure that all of you will offer them any information that they need. We'll count on that, and so we don't have to go through anything else again.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Kathy. Both urban forestry management programs generally address heritage tree programs as well. Both the city of Olympia and the city of Seattle have very robust heritage tree programs within the context of their urban forestry management program.
Right, right. Maybe that's an area we need to look at and add, you know, add clear, more language or whatever to ours, that would be good. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, great. We will look at those, those requests for revisions and get that out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next item, Administrator Parks, can you grab the? The next item is public comment, and again, I want to, we will, at this time, we will now receive public comment. You may comment items related to city business not related to a public hearing, which we do not have tonight. Sign-up sheet I have just been received is, was available in the back of the room for those wishing to sign up. If you have not signed up, there will be an opportunity to add later. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and speak to the microphone. We will also have individuals that will be online, that have registered online, and I will be working with the clerk on, on allowing them to speak. Each individual will be limited to one three-minute period to make their remarks regarding to any number of topics they wish to discuss. And there is a clock that will be started, that will be there, that will show your time, and so please pay attention to the clock. All comments will be directed towards the council as a whole, not to individual council members and not to members of the audience. Please refrain from disruptive behavior such as booing, hissing, audible comments, cheering, or clapping. And with that, I will go ahead and start with the public comment portion, and I will start with those who registered online. So do we have those that are registered online?
Yes, we have three right now online, so we will start with Beowulf Brower.
All right. And please state your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
Beowulf Brower, Olympia, Washington. I'm commenting to thank relevant parties for the behind-the-scenes work in giving a second opinion on the Meeker Oak. I've read through the proposal, and it is fundamentally sound, especially as it pertains to qualifications. This is especially true given that the city's arborist doesn't currently possess a tree risk assessment qualification. The only thing I'd add as a member of the public would be to include the tree board and historic preservation board in the decision-making process. The city is fortunate to have such boards, and it would behoove you to use them and their many years of combined experience to decide on an arborist and to interpret the resultant report. I'd also like to add my voice in support of comments made by council tonight as well. The city needs an update and strengthening of its tree protection ordinances. Doing so preemptively would have saved everyone a great deal of work, but it's never too late to start. I'm glad that you listened to the public and several public agencies. It gives hope that there might still be some hope in government, especially given current events. That's all I have for you guys. I look forward to reading what a more qualified arborist has to say, and thank you again for all the work you've done behind the scenes.
Thank you. Next.
Next, we have Sue Sikora.
Okay. Go ahead, state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. My name is Sue Sikora. I'm 2103 Harrison Ave in Olympia, Washington. And thank you again for, for making room for this topic. It's been challenging, and I really appreciate the preserving the Davis Meeker Oak Tree is making it onto the agenda, so thank you. Thank you for giving the tree a second chance to be preserved and listening to public voices in favor of preservation. And on behalf of the group of citizens, which is, which we've called the Save the Old Oak Tree, the Davis Meeker Oak, on behalf of this group, we would also like to present the petition that we were able to raise over 1,700 signatures from the last month. And as more signatures of support continue to come in every day, and so I just wanted to make sure that you all get a copy of that. So you'll look in your email for it, and we'll be, we'll be sending it to you. And just another, another way of, of showing support for this beautiful tree. And we are all, we all give our support in preserving this historical tree in a way that is safe for everyone. And again, thank you for continuing this discussion. And if there's any way that our group can help you, I want to sincerely offer that. We have such a talented group of volunteers, and we sincerely do want to help with this process. If there's any way that we can do it, we have lots of dedicated volunteers with many talents, very willing to help work, to help figure out a way to preserve this precious historical landmark of a tree. Thank you. And one last thing, just on listening to the previous presentation was, and this is maybe an ignorant thing to say, because I'm, I'm not an expert on these matters, but I hope it's clear at the end of the assessment, the tree assessment, maybe there's a little box that could say very clearly, is this tree capable of being saved and preserved? You know, so it's very clear from the assessment that, you know, that it's a yes, that it is capable of being preserved. Okay. Thank you for your time. Goodbye.
Thank you. Next one?
Okay, the next person to speak and the last registered is Shannon Duncan.
Go ahead and state your name and address for the rec.
Hi, my name is Shannon Duncan, Tomwater, Washington. As a resident of Tomwater and as a volunteer with the Save the Davis Meeker Oak Tree, I just wanted to voice my concerns. I wanted to first thank the council for working so hard and, and listening to us. We're a pretty amazing group. I just wanted to put that out there. These volunteers have worked very hard and come together really quick to try to save this tree. It's just, it means so much to, and means different things to different people. But I just wanted to voice my concern. We've lived here for, for many years in this beautiful city of Tomwater, and we moved here specifically to Tomwater from Lacey because of, it, it's a special place. And I've noticed it changed the last three years. And a lot of my friends and family in Tomwater have noticed the same change. A lot of public land action use signs everywhere. I, I can't just get in my car and go to three, three miles down the road without seeing five or six of them, big yellow signs anymore. A lot of commercial buildings, and I know that a city has to progress, but this city has progressed so much in the last three years and taken down so much protected land, you know? And I just, I think we're doing things such a knee-jerk reaction that sometimes we just need to stop and think. You know, we had a little brown bear come through our neighborhood this last Sunday, sweet little guy, just looking for food, because we're taking down their habitat, you know? And I just want, I just want us to all think about that before we make such rash decisions. And I just want to thank you all, and I want to thank everybody that's been a part of this amazing group, and thank you for listening to us, and, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Those are all of the ones that signed up online, and I will start with those that signed up in the back of the room. Courtney Fuller, if you can come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, perfect. Riley Glor. And again, if I mispronounce everyone's name, I apologize.
You've done good. My name is Riley Glor. I'm a resident of Olympia. I feel like I, I want to speak on the oak or oak tree situation. I feel like I have standing, you know, this Supreme Court was always talking about standing, and you're in Tomwater, I'm in Olympia, but I am a tenant at the airport, and I drive by that tree every day. And so I found out today or tonight that I'm actually a target in the general area, as they just stated earlier. But I want to thank the council and the mayor for your reconsideration of the situation. And sincerely, I think that's, that's very momentous. One thing that I don't think has been brought up at all, but, you know, there's been people trying to solicit money, I'm a major donation person, to help with this. And that, you know, originally it was says, well, we got to get so much money so we can hire lawyers. I think that hiring lawyers is a crazy thing to do, and I would suggest that perhaps it would be better if the, if the determination on this tree is that, yeah, it could be saved, but boy, that might cost some money, that there might be public funding or private funding helpful to assist the city in that, in that regard. And that's, that's what I'd like to offer as a solution, if we have one. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Hansen.
Thank you, City Council Pamela Hansen, PO Box 14521, Tomwater, Washington. And I would like to say what an excellent presentation, Tomwater. say what an excellent presentation Tom Water Hopes had. It was a long time ago, pre-COVID, that I had wanted to start something called the Innocent Command and really to help young people have the skill sets if they were growing up in a drug environment or drug home that they could cope easier. I feel really dwarfed by Tom Water Hopes efforts and just am so impressed. So I just wanted to say that. As far as the Davis Meeker Oak, I echo all of the public record contributions. And I would like to move on to item seven B, which is the Service Provider Agreement with Barker Rinker CCAT Architecture for Community Center Design from the Parks and Recreation Department. Just after the initial report on the jolt, which I know is not the public record, but it is a news media report. It impressed me as a duplicate effort. There is no land, there is no plan, and there is an old plan that was spent money on. So unless there's anything significantly, that has significantly changed, I don't see any reason to spend almost a quarter million dollars on a contract to study this again. It seems repetitive. And I'll just mention something that came up when I was researching it. Just off the cuff, False Claims Act. So I'm going to keep this short. False Claims Act sometimes involves medical billing and federal government involvement. I see this kind of no different as a duplicate blood test with a little bit of changes in the white blood cell. And it doesn't matter who's the contract, who's the billing, factual falsities versus legal falsities, claim for payment, who has the claim, false or fraudulent, if it's material, the same. It probably shouldn't be done again unless it's changed significantly. So whether it fits into a False Claim Act or not, if it does, there are six years for somebody to file a lawsuit. So I really hope that you reconsider. Moving forward with that, and I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dave Nicandry.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Dave Nicandry, Old Tom Water Hill. It's the week of the Fourth of July, and I'm here to celebrate a few items. It's an eclectic mix. First, I want to celebrate the issuance of the new RFQ on the study of the tree. I hadn't come here expecting to have that under consideration, but I was nonetheless pleased to witness that. Next, I want to congratulate the city, the council, the city staff on the Trosper Road Roundabout Project. I know it was a long time, a lot of tribulation. It's not only efficient, it's fun to drive, and that's that's a rare combination in the transportation world these days. Ditto for the new road down to the valley. I know that was the developers' project, but I suspect the city had a hand in encouraging that. That's also fun to drive. It's also more efficient for my personal commute down to the valley. It shaves down to the valley, shaves off eight tenths of a mile every day, so I'm very pleased with that. And for people who are walking or running down to the athletic club, the hill is steeper, so they're going to get more exercise. And that whole project, by the way, I testified to this fact before. City is so lucky to have that set of developers. I know they're working in partnership with you. But this is, this is a stunning development and is reversing a nearly now century-old grievous wound to the city with the creation of the freeway. We are creating a new city center core, and it's just fabulous to witness that coming into place. Third, or next, I want to acknowledge and thank the city for posting the Historic Highway 99 signs at the city entranceway, north and south, and on either side of the historic bridge. Those signs went up just in time to call attention to that corridor's most pronounced landmark, which of course is the Meeker Davis Oak Tree by the airport. Perhaps of more well, eccentric interest, today I'm wearing my Initiative 2066 pin, which is the Stop the Ban on Natural Gas. So that'll be, there'll be a vote of the people on that. So I won't be coming here on a weekly basis hectoring you about building codes. The people will have their say on that issue, much like they did fireworks a few years ago, as you might remember, vox popula. And that's it. It's the week of the Fourth of July. We got a parade coming up, fireworks display. Have a good holiday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jacob Hofer? Or is it Hofer?
Hello. I haven't prepared my speech, but this is in the context of the previous public commenting that I actually didn't comment on. It was just outside the door, but I had my giant original sin protest sign, right? It just so happens that between that moment and now, an Olympia police officer called Davis stole my protest sign. He framed me, pointed at him, and I said, I think you're in cahoots with hive mind cultists. Right? And then what he did, my back was against the wall, and he aggresses on me, so his nose touches my finger, right? So it's like clown town, Tokyo, right? I think the Bill of Rights are very clear, right? You're not entitled to people's minds, right? What does the Fourth Amendment mean if you're just allowed to invade someone's privacy like that? It's just every day for years. So that's Eighth Amendment as well, right? I'm always guilty till proven innocent. I've tried again and again and again, and I just, I've already contacted the council, and it doesn't seem as though you're ready to be honest. So this is just, you know, what do you want to call that? Just meaning, just about the meaning of having said I tried. I have my my new main thing right now. It's my handler for social media, @telepathyconspiracy on YouTube. It's one video, and it's showcasing my source code. There, my thoughts are more fully explained, and it's a particular standard where it's hard to find that, right? Where everything works within one HTML download. Everything else is built into many different packages of files, and my thing doesn't do that. Okay, so anyways, I don't know what else to say. I've got another minute. What do you do if the cops really are targeting you and they will never be honest, right? Does anybody have anything to say? No, okay. Well, thanks.
Thank you. Rhonda Larson Kramer.
Thank you. My name's Rhonda Larson Kramer, and I live at 1814 East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. And I signed up because I just wanted to explain something. A question had come up, a good question from the council during the Ms. Parks's discussion of the RFQ regarding sonic tomography. The, I'm learning a lot about these things when I'm doing this, working on Save the Davis Meeker Oak. And what I learned is that the test that the city's arborist used was the mallet test, very low technology. It's pounding on the tree and then listening at the base of the tree with your ear as the busy, noisy traffic goes by. That's not sonic tomography. Sonic tomography was done by tree solutions at the base of the tree only. And so what we as an organization, Save the Davis Meeker Oak, have been asking is for sonic tomography to be done throughout the entire canopy of the tree because it is advanced technology versus a mallet. Then once you do that, you can see where there is potentially cavities, potentially decay. And at those places, you take the next level up and use a more invasive test called resistograph. And a resistograph entails using a very small drill, drilling in, and you can see how far you go with that drill. And that gives you a sense of what actually is inside. So you do the sonic tomography to get an overall sense, and then you figure out where you need to go even deeper and more invasive to do that testing. I'd also like to mention that we have a website where everyone can find out more of this type of information and see our press releases. That is www/save-davis I'm sorry, www.davis-meeker-oke.org. And then we also are in the Fourth of July Parade, and I'm inviting anyone who would like to join us to come with us in that parade. So, thank you.
Thank you. Those were all of the ones that signed up on the sheet. Is there anyone else who wanted to sign up? Go ahead and come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, hello y'all. My name is Michelle Peterson, and I am a lifelong Olympia-Tom Water resident. I wanted to once offer some clarification for the petition that we raised for Save the Davis Meeker Oak with seventeen hundred signatures and running. I wanted to clarify what the petition is announcing, so you can be sure to understand that. Sorry, I just lost it. Let's see. The petition language, so everybody knows, please, please preserve the Davis Meeker Oak Tree for future generations, as well as making it safe to stay where it is without threat to public safety. This famous and beloved tree is an irreplaceable piece of our heritage cherished by the citizens of Tom Water, visitors, native tribes, and people of surrounding areas using this main transportation route. So I'm pleased that we can talk about future steps. I don't want to talk about the commemoration of the tree right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at public comment?
My name's RC Skip McConkey, and we've been here in Tom Water a long time. Our family way to the valley. We used to cut trees down for our firewood, where they Trosper Road East, I donated all that property. There was trees bigger than that oak tree that I had to fall in there. I got a plumber come in and he helped with this big DA. We wrestled him out of there. I donated it, so I could get back to my property, own the motel, back there, we own the valley. I don't see taking that tree down. Need to be groomed. We are now communicating with a national magazine. That's all they do is groom. They have their big convention. I should have brought it. There's four articles in there that they're going to be doing. And we've communicated, hope to put this tree on there. I wish you could see some of the trees. There's going to be three more articles on those trees that they've saved and their natural honey. That's what this tree, it needs to be groomed. They used to have those oaks all through here on the prairie. I used to go out to the mushroom plant and fill up my truck with mushrooms. They all sprouted all night, over the night. But I'd go into the oak trees, which are always hollow. Oh, some, as the bigger they get, the more hollow, but they're live on the outside. They'll last like four hundred years. A bird, they will, but it's a little different grooming and everything. I used to smoke the bees out of the hive. That always were in, they went through the hole. The bird nests were in there. But there's, that does not need to come down. I was ready to start a petition drive on it. That tree belonged to the people of Tom Water. The ground belonged to people of Tom Water. That magazine that I'm talking about, it tells in there how to vaccinate that tree, how to irrigate it, how to fertilize it. You need to put, now with global warming, you need to put irrigation to save some of these trees. The global warming has happened. Believe me, it's on its way. It's coming. I stopped the fluoride being put in the water. The little old lady asked me to. So I did it with the petition drive. I'm on the front page of the Daily O, telling the city council, you will not put fluoride in my water. A little old lady walked over, Judge signed my petition, injunction, hold it back. Got the signatures, put it on the vote, would beat it. Ten years later, they came back. Want to put more of that industrial stuff in, was on the buset. No fluoride, we had to do it again, three times a day. Then they flooded the, they did the east side hill here with Chavo. They flooded my land. Kicked me off a little bit, so they were going to build those towers. Nine-story buildings downtown there, on the east side. And the six, eleven governors asked, Peter Washington, asked me if I'd go after. I did it with a petition drive. I got the petitions. I put together two little groups. And we stopped it. If that's what are going to take here, let's do the petition drive and save our tree.
The three minutes are up, thank you. Anyone else wanting to do public comment? All right, great. So now we will move on to council considerations. The first one is a Pioneer Park EV charging. We need to pass the consent calendar. I am sorry. So we will go ahead. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move we approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
All right, then moved and seconded. Any discussion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, nay? All right, the motion carries. We have, with that, approve the minutes of the city council work session for June 11th. Payment vouchers and intergovernment EMS contract funding amendment two with the SWAT medic. We also have a golf course stormwater retrofit grant agreement with the Department of Ecology, Amendment One. And reappointment of David Bills, Brian Reynolds, Sat Paul for the Lodging and Tax Advisory Committee. So now we will go to council considerations. With that, we have the Pioneer Park EV charging capital agreement with the Department of Commerce and go ahead.
Thank you. Would you please bring up the presentation? Thank you. I'll be short tonight. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me. Like the mayor said, talking about a capital agreement with Department of Commerce for a Pioneer Park EV charger. So the city was awarded a grant from the Department of Commerce to deploy and purchase an ADA-accessible, off-grid, solar-powered, battery-backed-up EV charger with two Level Two ports. This is a pilot to see if this kind of charger will work well in Tom Water and will be especially helpful for locations where we don't have existing electrical capacity or we don't want to trench through things like athletic fields. And that's a picture of the unit itself. We'll be deploying it next to an ADA space as well, so it can be used by everyone. The scope of work within this agreement is, includes a pre-deployment community meeting where we'll meet and invite members of the community to meet at Pioneer Park to talk about what's coming. Then we'll order the unit, we'll deploy and commission the unit, we'll add some fun things to the unit, including a weatherproof box for brochures and a sticker next to a 120-volt outlet that will be on the unit that will be encouraged for use for charging e-wheelchairs and e-bikes, so other forms of electric transportation. We'll produce an internal frequently asked questions and train staff, and then have a post-deployment community meeting where we invite people to come visit the chargers and learn how they work. We'll spread the word about the chargers being open and available through things like Plug Share and the city's website, and then we'll monitor and maintain the station. The grant includes funding to prepay for six years of operations and maintenance warranty and also the EV charging network fees. Like I said, this is a pilot, so it has the opportunity to scale up if successful, especially for facilities where we don't have electrical capacity to add EV charging really easily or in parks or spaces that are just harder to deploy EV charging. This will be the first station of this kind in Washington State. This station is used extensively in California, where it's manufactured, and also New York. But this will be the first time in Washington, to the best of my knowledge, and Pierce County has already expressed interest in following our pilot, including coming to those pre and post-deployment meetings to hear about how it works, because they'd like to use this for their fleet. Because, like I said, it's battery-backed up, so in the case of a power outage, these will still work. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I would be grateful if you all would approve the mayor to sign this agreement.
Great. Any questions? A council member, all houses, then council members, worth of?
So it's battery backup and it operates primarily off solar. Does that mean there can't? Could it, is it possible that there's an instance where someone goes to charge and there isn't electricity? Could it, is it possible that there's an instance where someone goes to charge and there isn't electricity to utilize? Like if you, if the battery is drained through consecutive users and it's cloudy that day, is that possible?
Yes. So the unit is spec two, give about three hundred miles of charge per day.
Okay.
Councilmember Swartho, and then I'll go to Councilmember Kathy Astor, Councilmember Swartho.
Thank you for this amazing grant that you got for the city to be able to have this installed. Following up on, so they'll, the people will be able to use it for free or is there, okay. And we have six years for them to be able to use it for free?
Yes, this charger, because it's not attached to the grid, will never have an electricity bill associated with it. So the cost of purchasing the grant, the, the unit is through the grant in a small city match. If the city does decide to charge for use after the six years that are associated with the grant, we can. But so far we're doing really well with the inexpensive charging available for the public for free.
Amazing, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. Alyssa, did you, how did we, how did we get chosen? How did all this come about that now we are famous in a grand part of the United States?
I will admit that through my entire career, I have been trying to get this unit. And it didn't happen until after I was outside of the Sunshine State that someone decided to hop on and fund the innovative idea. We submitted a competitive kind of out of the box proposal and Commerce had the courage to try this for an innovative pilot to see if it'll help other jurisdictions. So we tried and it worked out.
I think that you're at the, at the top of that week. And see the rewards you get for moving to a little bit of rain out of a sunshine state. The place that can offer you all kinds of, of things except the seashore right by us, but
I look forward to plugging in.
I wanted to say, what I'm trying to say is I'm really glad you're here and some of the things that you have done are just wonderful. And this is an outstanding accomplishment and it makes me very proud and proud of Tomwater. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, anyone else? All right, with that, I will call for a motion.
I'd like to make that motion. I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the capital grant agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce for the purchase and installation of an E V charging pilot. I believe there should be an at Pioneer Park in the amount of eighty seven thousand zero fifty two.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Jefferson, seconded by Councilmember Kathy. Any additional comments? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries unanimous and yay, we got, we get, we're going to be trailblazers here.
Yes.
Tomwater. All right. So the next item that we're going to do is service provider agreement for Barker, Renkin, Seacrest Architecture for the Community Center Design and Chuck Denny will be doing the presentation here. So welcome Chuck.
Thank you. It's good to be here and, and nice to be talking about this. It's been a long time coming. I'm here tonight to ask you to authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement with Barker Rinker C Cat Architecture out of Denver, Colorado to help us design a new community center. The General Government Committee reviewed this contract and recommended approval to city council at their June twelfth meeting this year. Asking that it be placed on the consent agenda because it was an important item for future community facility. So here I am tonight. A few notes, it's, it's been brought up that we've, we've done this process before and we have. We did this in two thousand and four, almost to the day, twenty years ago, June, it was July twelfth. Twenty twenty, two thousand and four, when we entered into a contract to design a community center as a part of the Public Facilities District. Funding competition that went on between the three cities. It was somewhat of a different facility at that point and we weren't successful in obtaining funding for that. But this will, this will have a few of the same elements. I'd remind you that in two thousand and four, Tomwater had about almost sixteen thousand residents and today we're just over twenty eight thousand. It's a different community, different needs. We're going to be assessing that when we put together this plan for a new facility. So as, as part of this contract, we'll have an executive committee, which is really just some, some staff members that will be working with Barker Rinker C Cat on setting up the process, setting up the community meetings, taking input, providing correspondence, those kinds of things. Really guiding, kind of providing direction for where this is going to go. We'll have a steering committee that will be the larger group that will really help make some tough decisions on what goes in this building, what we can afford. What produces revenue, what does not produce revenue, what meets community needs that we've identified. We'll have people on that committee. There'll be a representative from the city council. There'll be representatives from the Parks Commission. I've been in contact with the Tomwater School District and they'll have a representative. We'll have a representative from our senior center, a representative from the Tomwater Chamber. And then we'll have citizens at large in various aspects of from events to youth sports to maybe even Tomwater hopes, people like that that will be on the committee. So really trying to get a, a good slice of the community to provide input. And the, the really where all the information is going to come out is, is we're going to do a community survey. Assess the needs of the community. What does Tomwater need? What are we lacking now? Obviously, as Parks Director, I can tell you, you know, right off the top of my head, here's the things that we, we, we do now that have a huge need in the community and we can't provide it because we don't have facility and list that off. But we're going to be going to the community and, and really really asking the people, what is it that you want and how do you want to use it and how can we provide that? So we'll do a community survey, then we're going to have two community open houses where anyone and everyone can come. Same information, same questions, really trying to get as much information as we can. And then it's back to the steering committee to try to put it all together. Put it to a budget. How much is it going to cost to build? And as we know, it's not really the cost of how much it costs to build. It's how much is it going to cost to run it for, say, twenty years? That's the big expense. So building efficiencies into it, making sure we're serving the largest piece of the pie as we can in Tomwater. And that's kind of where we're at. So I hope you are excited about this and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Jefferson.
Okay, so the last one was twenty years ago. What do you anticipate the timeline for this to be another twenty years?
Well, the, the last one was twenty years ago and we didn't do anything with it because we didn't get the funding.
Funding, right. What is this one looking like? Five years, ten years?
Oh no, it can be much faster than that. It was, and I, and I should have said this at the start. This is a, this is a facility that was funded as part of the Tomwater Metropolitan Park District Formation. The voters, we told the voters, if you vote to tax yourselves, and in this case it was thirteen million dollars to build a community center. That's what we're going to do. And, and that was the big ticket item on the Metropolitan Park District vote was this facility. And they did vote, they wanted us to do that. So the funds are allocated. And it, so it is funded. So as soon as we design it, then we can move into being able to build it because the funds are set aside.
Excellent news. Thank you, Chuck.
Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. Hi Chuck. Could you clarify what one of our citizens spoke to in the public comment period about, so we don't have any place to put this? And that might impact the design?
We're looking at, we're looking at four different sites as a part of this and we have a, a matrix that we're going to evaluate each of those four sites to see which one fits best. Obviously, you know, community center just in its name. We want it to be something that everyone has easy access to, whether it's just from within the city or from Interstate five or, or wherever they're coming from. It's meant to serve Tomwater, all Tomwater citizens, so we want it to be easily accessible. So we'll go through that matrix that lists everything from, you know, proximity to bus service to schools to local businesses to restaurants to street infrastructure, what makes the most sense. And, and those sites are the old DOT site on Capitol Boulevard, which is about ten acres. The brewery site behind the golf course where the warehouse is. Port property, which is where we were going to cite the last one in two thousand and four. That was the site that was selected at that point. And we'll also be looking at the proposed Y M C A site down on Ninety Third.
So we're still looking for about the use of ten acres as we did before?
Yeah, envisioning kind of how it may turn out, ten acres is kind of the minimum, yes.
So we're not, we're not working on this design part, just randomly deciding about what would be nice for a design without some restraint or, or, you know, no restraint as far as the property is concerned.
I think my answer there is correct, if I understand what you're saying. There's certainly restraint, yes, both restraint site wise and, and financially.
Very good. I just wanted people to hear what you had to say based on that statement. We didn't have a place to put it. Thank you.
Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Thanks, Mayor. One of the other things that we went to the ballot with was not just a community center, but also to set aside land for a future swimming facility, aquatics facility. Is that also a factor that's going into the consultant's analysis of various sites and whether they're viable?
It is. And, and let me, let me read that to you. What we, what the voters voted on, what we put in the voters pamphlet was that we would build a community center with meeting and event space, a senior center, indoor sports courts and land for a future public swimming pool.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion? Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement with Barker Rinker C Cat Architecture for Community Center Design.
And I second that.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Alt Hauser, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is the contract approval for an eight-year multifamily tax exemption for Rookery Apartments. And Brad Mudrude will be presenting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just a moment as my presentation comes up. So what is before the council tonight is the contract approval for eight-year multifamily tax exemption for a project known as the Rookery Apartments located on Capitol Boulevard. What I would like to do first is sort of give you again some of the background on the multifamily tax exemption program, then I'll go into the details of the project. The request for the council tonight is that you approve the contract so this project can move forward through the process. I'll explain in detail what that is. So again, in two thousand and fourteen, the city council adopted the Capitol Boulevard Corridor Plan. The plan recommended establishing a multifamily tax exemption program to improve the financial viability of redevelopment of the corridor. As you recall, the corridor is primarily made up of very small parcels relative to, say, current development. In order to achieve the vision of the plan, there was going to be a need for additional incentives to be brought to bear in order to see the, the kind of development that the council had envisioned. The purpose of the multifamily tax exemption program is that in two thousand and seventeen, the council adopted a multifamily tax exemption program to stimulate desired multifamily development within key areas of the city. At the time, it was the Brewery District and the Capitol Boulevard Corridor area. The, the M F T program includes an eight-year tax exemption, providing market rate housing. That again, it's intended to encourage further development in the designated areas such as the Capitol Boulevard Corridor. The eight-year tax exemption does not include an affordable housing component as its intention is really to stimulate the overall multifamily housing development in support of wider redevelopment of the corridor. Essentially, the idea is putting more bodies in the area increases the demand for services and commercial activity. So ultimately, we are, we're just trying to do more to create more synergy and so forth within those corridor areas. As I mentioned, it's a catalyst for economic redevelopment. Talked a little bit about increasing residential opportunities, stimulating new construction and multifamily. Also, it's helping to focus multifamily development in those targeted areas that we want it to go in. Meaning that it's on areas that are on transit service now, that could be readily served by services and other things. And it also gives us those additional residential densities to give us more possibilities of additional transit services and so forth in those areas. Little bit of background on the effect on revenue with the program. And approved multifamily tax exemption is a shift in revenue from property tax. It is effectively zeros out the property tax for the course of the exemption. When the city council sets the city property levy, the city levies a total dollar amount that'll be collected for city operations. When certain property owners receive discounts, such as through the multifamily tax exemption program or other kinds of programs, those costs are redistributed to other property owners in the city. No matter how much the multifamily tax exemption discounts the city provides, the city will ultimately still collect the same amount of property tax dollars. To date, in terms of both conditional and final approvals, through April of this year, we have three hundred total conditional units approved, of which two hundred and sixty-three are market rate and thirty-seven are affordable. In terms of final approvals, meaning that those projects are built, that letters, certificates of occupancy being issued. We have a hundred and forty-one total units of those, hundred and twelve are market rate and twenty-nine are affordable. In terms of the breakdown of where those are in the target areas in the city, we have a hundred and nineteen total units in the Brewery District that have been approved conditionally. All of those are eight-year tax exemptions. And we have about three hundred and twenty-two units in, on Little Rock Siberia in two large projects. Both of those are twelve-year projects. One has received final approval and one is probably getting pretty close in terms of where they are in construction. Focusing on the contract that's in front of the council. This is a project that's located at sixty-five oh one Capitol Boulevard. It's just north of the intersection of Capitol Boulevard and Dennis Street. It's on the corner of Z Street and Capitol Boulevard. It is a mixed-use development that's proposing six units of new multifamily housing. And they're applying for the year multifamily tax exemption to basically help them build the project. The project site is here, as you can tell, it's just immediately south of Z Street. They're under construction right now. There's an existing house that is being converted into an office that they're using right now. The approval process for a conditional certificate follows the processes outlined in Municipal Code three thirty. The applicant has filed a complete conditional certificate application with the city. City staff has completed a review of the application, determined that it's complete and meets the requirements of the chapter. Community Development has approved the conditional certificate. As part of that approval process, the applicant must enter into a contract with the city that needs to be approved by the city council, under which the gap and agrees to complete the development as outlined in the contract. An approved conditional certificate and contract are valid for three years from the date of approval. That means they have three years to complete the project and have a certificate of occupancy issued. The next stage, once they complete the project and get a certificate of occupancy, is the final certificate of prop, a portion of the process. Upon completion of the approvals, they file an application for the final certificate. We review and will approve that. And then we file that final tax certificate of tax exemption with the Thurston County Assessor's Office. At that point, that's when the exemption starts. The assessor needs to make the evaluation, make the necessary changes and the clock starts on the exemption at that point. Recommended action from the staff is to authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the eight-year tax exemption as recommended by the General Government Committee at their June twelfth meeting. If you have any questions, I will be able to answer those.
All right, any questions? Councilmembers for that.
Well, thank you, Brad, for your presentation. I had the opportunity in getting ready for the meeting to watch the minutes from the General Government Committee. I was curious about how some of the questions and the things that had come up on that. And so I know we're not probably able to talk about the, but the project seems like it's a really, it's going to be a passive project. It's woman owned. It's just all the things, it's checking the boxes of things that we're, we're looking at in, in Tomwater as well. One of the things that came across was that we're talking about the funding piece of it and how this is so essential for them to even be able to, this is like, there are these three women that are doing this. It's entirely business that are going to be there are these three women that are doing this. It's entirely business that are, are going to be doing this, and so how essential this piece is, so, um, of this funding. Another piece I, we've had other, we've had people comment about, um, how much, how much is falling back on the shoulders of the, the residents and the Thurston County and all, and just if there was even possible that we talked, going down that math maze to present facts that could be put on the website, our website, because people are coming up with numbers, saying, you know, like thousands of dollars and things like that, and just trying to put it in perspective. So people that can look at that and see, you know, these are what we've approved so far, and this is what we're anticipating. You know, the cost will be, and so it would be nice that that would be possible to, uh, put that on our website.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we, we could look to do that. There are a couple of things. Number one, uh, we report to the state on an annual basis on approved projects in terms of, uh, especially the affordability component. Uh, we basically have to demonstrate that each of the units is truly affordable under the program. And so we submit all of that paperwork to the, the, the state as part of that process. We can certainly make that available on our website. Uh, one thing, and this is a sort of addressing the question, I think, about how, uh, the costs of the program are distributed across the community. Um, this, the numbers I'm going to be citing are from February of nine, of twenty twenty-three. It was a question that had been asked by the council at that time, uh, and I'd asked for, uh, our finance director's assistance in sort of coming up with a, a general answer to this. Now, some very important caveats. Obviously, we're talking about numbers from twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're talking about property tax, which varies depending upon individual properties, whether they, for example, under one fire district, it may be one thing, under one school district, maybe another, may have other exemptions and all those other things. So there's a lot of variables at play here. But in general, what was found is if we assume that a, uh, an apartment complex has an assessed value of about five million dollars, uh, the city's portion of that is roughly one point seven seven of a thousand dollars, roughly about eight hundred, I mean, eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and if we look at that, how that city portion would be spread across the community, uh, in total, we also looked at all of the, the total property tax, because the city property tax is a, is a smaller portion compared to, say, the school in the county and the state's portion. Um, essentially, what it meant was if a apartment complex with an assessed five million dollars got the exemption, that exemption would be spread across about ten thousand individual, single-family housing units roughly at a cost of probably less than five dollars per unit on an annual basis. So that's a general idea of the impact. It is obviously not something that has gone into a lot more detail, so I'm, if we're gonna do this, we need to actually run the numbers in more detail, but that gives you a relative idea of how those costs play out.
I appreciate that.
Great. Uh, was that it?
I just had another question.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
And then I'll go to, after that, I'll go to Councilmember Cathy.
Um, we, we're working on the comp plan, and you had presented, uh, the number of units that we need by, um, by income level. And so just looking at some of our lowest, from zero to thirty percent AMI, um, and we're looking at, and also then the, the next step up from thirty-one to fifty percent AMI, it's almost like twenty-eight hundred units are needed. And with that, I was, I wanted to ask the question, uh, like on the first one, it says public support will be needed in all markets. So what, what does that look like? What is, what are we talking about with public support? Is that too broad a question to ask?
No, uh, it essentially means that public funds need to be used for the project, uh, for the project to be built. And in those cases where, uh, uh, supportive housing is needed, meaning that on an annual basis, there needs to be, um, onsite or readily available supports for those living in those units, that is a public cost. And so those things also really need to be part of the discussion that we have about this. The city can of, and offer incentives perhaps to, on the higher end of the markets, up to the eighty percent, uh, say the fifty to eighty to a hundred to get things done, but really, it's public dollars that's going to get the, the things that the private development community is not going to enter the market to build.
Well, twenty-eight hundred units we are anticipating that are going to need public support, so.
Correct.
We have.
A substantial need, uh, to accomplish, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Cathy.
Thank you. Um, I was, uh, on this council when this was, uh, decided back, what was the first time you said, Brad, was two thousand seven, eight, um, and then again in seventeen. Uh, and I have, uh, voted against it every time, and for just the reasons that Councilmembers Worthout brought up. And if you look at the stats, there are hundreds of these that have been built with twelve-year um, exemptions by large builders in this area who do not have to pay property taxes for twelve years, as long as they have twenty percent of these, you know, three hundred unit buildings, uh, with, um, low income rent. And, um, at the end of the twelve years, those can be changed, correct, Brad? They can be, they resort back to, uh, not having to be low income?
If the council doesn't make any changes to the program that currently has, that would be the case. Uh, in two thousand twenty-one, the state had amended the multifamily tax exemption, uh, ordinance regulations on the state level to allow an option uh, to extend, uh, twelve-year. Uh, there are some conditions for the extension of that twelve-year. Number one, uh, that the actual AMI of the people who would be rent, uh, renting those additional affordable units would actually be low income, rather than the current range of right now, a hundred and, uh, eighty to a hundred and fifteen percent is currently, uh, spelled out in the state law. So there would be options to consider at the end of the twelve-year. Uh, we would need to make some amendments to the current program for that to occur. Uh, but again, uh, this is just one of the many things that I think the city, uh, has to try in order to meet the goals that we have.
So, um, I, I have not voted for this because, uh, however you spin this, whatever the numbers, whatever, that are the key sentence to this is, and the city will collect the same amount of property tax, and the city has got to raise people's taxes to be able to do that, and I am against that. I'm not against housing, you know, and also especially low-income housing and so forth. But if also you look at this, you see that the, that the largest complexes built by the wealthy um, builders in this area are the ones that are twelve years, with only twenty percent of these large apartment buildings and whatever they want to call them, have to be low income, whatever that turns out to be. And the, i- if there's something not quite right about this with me, and I think that we do as a city need to look at it again. We've talked about this at General Government. That's also what, um, Councilmember Swarthow referred to, and we have made a commitment, at least verbally along the way, that we're going to look at this again, as, um, Brad has said. Now, the thing that I want to mention about what's on tonight, for the first time, I am going to vote for this, because what this, this is, is this is not only three women doing this, but what they're doing is they're doing it for moderate to low-income people. And this is a, this is a combination of, of, of what you want to see happen if you're going to give people an exemption and give them a start to do something that we say we have priority for, which is low-income housing and which is, um, contributing to the community the way this will. And it happens to be on the corridor that we originally, uh, did this agreement for. So, um, I just want the, I'm saying this again ad nauseam, I know. Um, so the public continues to understand this, and here's that we hopefully have this commitment to, um, look at this further and make sure that we use it in the right way to encourage, um, you know, more housing for more people. And, uh, that's, that's my, that's my thing, but I'm excited to vote for it, for this project. Thanks, Brad, presenting that.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathy. Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to thank Councilmember Cathy and Councilmembers Worthout for their comments. Um, I mean, the housing challenge, I just want to first sort of start with the context of the housing challenges that we do face, which are immense. As we know from our TRPC presentations that we've received from our meeting with the Planning Commission last week, we need about five thousand more units of housing over the next fifteen-ish years, which is a dramatic number. Um, I mean, that's close. I think we have, what, Brad, like six thousand units of housing in the city now or something like that? We need to add five thousand units of housing in the next fifteen-ish years. That is a dramatic departure from where we are. And in terms of the tools that we have, um, incentivizing density, where density makes sense along the Capitol Corridor, I think is a very important tool in the tool chest. When we talk about impacts on taxpayers, I, I think it's also worth noting that the less density we have in the urban core, then the more sprawl we get, and the more sprawl we get, the more services cost for those rural outline communities. So to the degree that we can have more of those units in denser spots where it makes sense to on the Capitol Boulevard corridor, that reduces other taxpayer expenses for wider roads and more road maintenance elsewhere and other types of services and whether it's an eight-inch or a twelve-inch water main that we have to have in a rural area, all those services come with a cost, and incentivizing density, I think, makes sense. It's, I think, Councilmember Cathy, as you pointed out, this is a, a project that is, you know, relatively modest. We're talking about six units, um, developed by, um, folks who live in the community to serve the community. Um, I'm going to be proud to support it. Um, and I also do want to acknowledge, um, the conversation you mentioned, Councilmember Cathy, about revisiting the program in the future. I, I do think we should do that next year. Um, not only look at what we currently have, but the state has also made changes to allow for a twenty-year exemption that then would provide affordable units for, is it seventy-five years or something like that? Um, I don't know if that's the right fit for us, but if it's a tool that's available, I think it behooves us to look at that and to look at the changes the state has made to the eight-year and the twelve-year and see what still makes sense for us, because the world is very different than it was in twenty seventeen, when we passed those laws to begin with. The housing market is drastically different, as we all know. Um, so I, I, I want to make space if other people have comments. Um, otherwise, it'd be, oh, it looks like Peter does. Otherwise, I would make a motion.
All right. Councilmember Gabby.
So, Brad, my only question is, for the income guideline, would that conform to the federal income guideline?
Uh, the proposed development would basically be market rate, so there wouldn't be an affordable, uh, portable percentage that would be, have to follow income guidelines. So essentially, the, the project is just supporting the construction of new housing. Uh, it's not establishing any kind of, uh, income range that we'd have to follow. The, the income ranges that we use are the HUD numbers that are modified to, uh, they're basically, we're drawing from the, what the Thurston County uses for their AMI, uh, which are derived from the HUD numbers. Or when we have a portable housing component.
For the, uh, for the low income, how do you determine that if you're going by the market rate?
I'm sorry, I, could you repeat the question, please?
Okay, so you said, correct me if I'm wrong, for the low income that's set aside, how would you define who is low income if you just said that that would be, that would be by the, uh, market rate?
Right. So in this particular application, it is a market rate, so it is whatever the market can bear, what the, the rents could be potentially be. When we're dealing with that twenty percent affordable, uh, what's established right now within the city regulations is that it has to be affordable to those earning eighty percent to a hundred and fifteen percent of AMI, uh, that's area median income. Uh, low income is actually, starts probably at about fifty percent and under. Uh, that's the new and different regulations that the state has adopted that we haven't, um, brought forward as part of a change in our code yet.
Thank you.
I, I would like, uh, Mayor, if I could to, I want to thank, uh, Michael for his, uh, comments and, uh, clarifications and the other impacts that happen in, in the building of these, uh, these particular projects. And I, and I just want to mention, because it, um, hurts my heart, all of the, um, and especially some of the largest of these, um, tax-exempt developments have, uh, taken down considerable number of trees in the high, the high number of trees. I don't want to quote a number. It's, makes me sad. But that's another cost to us when we think about that urban, you know, we want to do the urban, uh, area. The urban corridor makes sense, Capitol Boulevard. Um, you know, but when we talk about, you know, you know, stopping, stopping sprawl, well, we're taking down all the urban trees. So, uh, we're paying, we're paying some, uh, price in both pay ways. And I just want us to be aware that some of these large developments are, are, are doing that, and I wish there were different creative ways we could do housing rather than building all the same kind of big things and paving parking lots and all of that. But that's, that's my thing. And thank you, Michael, for, for their explanation and, uh, your commitment as Chair of the, of the General Government Committee to, um, have this discussion. And hopefully then we can bring some of it to council. So thank you.
Great. Anything else? I think you can go ahead.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign, uh, for an eight-year multifamily tax exemption for the Rookery Apartments, Tom dash two four dash zero seven one four.
And I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alt Hauser, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Brad. All right. With that, we are now going to move to committee reports. First one is Public Health and Safety Committee, Councilmember Agabi.
Thank you, Mayor. For Public Health and Safety, our meetings are going to be on July night, next week, Monday, I believe. So on our agenda, we have a Thurston County Prosecutor, uh, update, and then we have the Homeland Security Division, three omnibus mutual aid agreements. Those are the two items on our agenda.
Great, thank you. Next one is, uh, General Government Committee, Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on Wednesday, June twelfth. Um, we had a pretty packed agenda. We continued our journey through the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan updates, this time focusing on the land use and conservation elements. And then we also had a couple, a couple other, uh, items that were actually on our agenda to finalize this night. Tonight, one of them was the MFD, which we just approved. Thank you, everyone, for your support on that. The other one was the service provider agreement for the community center. So I'm glad that we have those projects and pieces moving forward.
Great, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Public Works Committee, Councilmember Worthout.
Um, our next meeting will be on July eighteenth. I know it seems like a while away, but, uh, we have, we should, would have been on the Fourth of July, so we're gonna count for postponing. Meeting will be doing another one on July eighteenth, and on our agenda will be Three Lakes Crossing Oversizing Agreement, Agreement for Transfer of Interest in Brewery Assets, and the Lot Disheaths Folly Properties Purchase Update.
Great, thank you. And Budget and Finance Committee hasn't met, and I can guarantee you, we're going to be coming into the budget season, so that will be changing. Uh, so stay tuned. Uh, next is the Mayor's City Administrator Report, and I will start with, uh, City Administrator, uh, Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, continuing on the, uh, theme of the, uh, upcoming meetings, I just wanted to let you know because we haven't been able to have, uh, Public Works Committee meetings, um, and it is construction season. Um, at your July sixteenth meeting, we're gonna have, um, three or four different items under consideration that are project-related, um, that need your attention, uh, before we get to our summer recess that the projects can get going. But the reason they're on consideration is because they haven't been able to go to a committee meeting. Um, so, um, just kind of a heads up on that. When you get your packet for that July sixteenth meeting, if you have any questions at all on any of those projects, there will be a presentation, obviously, at the, uh, council meeting, but please feel free to, uh, reach out to, uh, staff people, and they can answer any questions that you might have. So just a heads up. Um, it is the Fourth of July week, as, um, Mr. Nekandry identified. And so we have lots of events coming up on Thursday. The parade starts at eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock. And so we have lots of events coming up on Thursday. The parade starts at 11 o'clock, 11 o'clock. Um, there is a whole lot of information on the Parks and Recreation Events, um, page on our website. Um, the Family Fun Festival and Nisqually Redwind Casino Fireworks Show is happening down, um, by the golf course. Gates open at 6:00 PM for the Family Fun, uh, Festival. Parking on site is $10 per vehicle, cash only, and all of those proceeds will benefit the Thurston County Special Olympics. And, uh, the fireworks show is set to begin at 10:15 PM. Um, another heads up on your July 9th work session, that is another joint work session with the Planning Commission. So it is a hybrid, um, uh, meeting format here in the council chambers. First hour of that meeting will be with the Planning Commissioners, talking about comp plan, uh, updates. Um, following, uh, the conclusion of that hour, the Planning Commission will leave and retire to their, uh, meeting location and will continue, um, with a couple of other agenda items for the council, um, uh, review and discussion uh, in here in that work session, uh, format. Capital Trosper Project, uh, ribbon cutting, we are, um, wrapping up that decade-long project, uh, and it is time to celebrate. Um, save the date for Wednesday, July 24th, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. Uh, basically on the southwest corner of Capital Trosper. Uh, we have invited not only you all, um, as well as a whole lot of management team and existing, uh, the existing mayor, obviously. We've also invited, uh, the former mayor, the former city administrator and the former public works directors to, uh, come join us. Uh, big, big transportation projects, uh, take a lot of time and often, um, uh, cross those boundaries between, uh, elected officials. So we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to cele- celebrate, um, that great project. And I, I must say, there is a post on the Facebook page, and there is very few, if any, negative comments about how that project functions with, it was, it's a great design. Um, it has, um, really improved that intersection, that whole, that whole interchange area. Uh, and kudos to everybody involved in that project from the get-go. You, uh, may have been aware that the Supreme Court did hand down a decision on the Grants Pass case. Uh, this is the one that affects, um, the, um, enforcement of camping regulations, uh, on city-owned and public property. Um, staff, uh, generally speaking, the decision, uh, indicate by the Supreme Court said that it is not um, cruel and unusual punishment, um, as prohibited by the Eighth Amendment, um, to enforce camping regulations. Um, so staff is, um, in the legal department particularly is evaluating and, um, trying to understand the ramifications of that. And we will be coming back to you at some point in the future, um, to talk about options. Um, our code currently has a prohibition on camping. Um, the Parks Ordinance Amendment that we had considered, um, late last year and the beginning of this year would have indicated that enforcement of that nighttime loitering or camping provision would have been, um, suspended for people who were experiencing homelessness. That provision was not adopted. Um, at this point in time, we will continue with what we have been doing, uh, until we have an opportunity to talk with the council about any other direction. So we will be continuing to, um, uh, try and help people who are experiencing homelessness and sleeping on public property, getting them to a facility, um, uh, um, where they can be, um, housed at least temporarily. And then the last thing I would say is that, um, in addition to all the budget work that we're doing, the, um, state audit is going to begin later this month. So our finance staff is very, very busy, um, as we speak. So I don't have anything else unless there are any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, with that, uh, so I, um, other than attending the AWC Conference as well as others, um, that created a conflict for some of my outside meetings, uh, I did want to, again, let everyone know that, um, former, uh, council member Neil McClanahan's memorial service is tomorrow at noon at St. Michael's, um, parish. And, uh, and I will be attending that, and other council members are certainly welcome to attend. So, um, it, um, it's a really sad when we lose someone who contributed so much to this community for so many years, uh, and many of you know that Neil McClanahan was also the undersheriff for Thurston County for under three different sheriffs. So, um, he, he gave a lot, including nonprofits. So he was definitely gave a lot into this community. So with that, I will now go to, uh, council member reports, and I guess I will start uh, in, uh, Zoom. Councilmember Agabi, do you mind starting?
No problems, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
On the 26th, I attended my last, uh, committee meeting for the month of June, and that was for the EDC, uh, Board Meeting, EM. And, uh, it was our last meeting of the, uh, for the period until, uh, September, so it was, uh, parquet agenda. At the meeting, we had the presentation from Ann Peet, the CEO of, uh, Beyond Olympia, uh, Best Experience Olympia and Beyond. She gave a presentation of the 10-year, uh, Destination Master Plan Strategy. And in that plan, there were several key, key areas that EDC and CBI are going to, uh, lead. And, uh, go, uh, and I said, uh, how that is going to happen, that is going to be between, uh, between them and EDC. And then, uh, the other, uh, item I wanted to note that we discussed was the Office of, uh, Minority Business Women, uh, Enterprise. They presented to the board the update that was, uh, an update of, 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 of a program that has been undertaken through the CBI, CBNI. It was noted that this is a component of the EDC over our strategy and effort for building and supporting an equitable and inclu- inclusive economy and entrepreneurial ecosystem. Um, the other item that is one of note is, uh, the Korea Startup Center in Seattle. He's in partnership with EDC, the Korean government actually, uh, owns that, uh, enterprise. And EDC is working with, they would, uh, with that, uh, enterprise because they had had EDC to help us source for, um, businesses that, or areas that they could have a business within Washington. So, uh, EDC is working with that, that, uh, enterprise through the government of Korea. That is all I have for my report.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Von Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on June 17th, I attended the Thurston County Lead, um, meeting. We're meeting bi-monthly, so we won't meet again until August. And that is just always a really uplifting meeting. We learned, um, about some successes and challenges of everyone involved in LEED, um, diversion expansion efforts, and also some celebrations that will be coming up. And when I get notification of that, I will share it with everyone. And then, um, I was lucky enough to get to attend the Association of Washington Cities Conference down in Vancouver, my hometown. So it was good. It was amazing to see the growth of Vancouver. There were so many great workout sessions. Um, I think that everyone who attended is going to be able to bring, um, some knowledge and inspiration back, um, to the city of Tumwater. And it was just a really good experience to get to meet other electeds from across the state.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I attended as the alternate with Councilmember Alt Hauser, uh, to the Regional Council, Regional Housing Council meeting. And then, uh, some of my other meetings were canceled. It's summer, in case we didn't recognize it. We certainly will, buddy, into this weekend. And I'd like to, speaking on that, and so I don't have any other, um, reports to give on, on meetings. I just want to remind people that as this heat comes, to pay attention to the, their neighbors, if they have elderly neighbors or people who are, you know, physically challenged or whatever, with this oppressive heat that's coming, and there are going to be days after days after days in the 90s. And also to make sure you take care of your pets. Bring them in or make sure that you don't walk your dogs and burn their feet or that you, if you keep your dogs outside, make sure they have a shady place and plenty of water. You always hear stories after Washingtonians go through a really hot time of the things that we forget to look around and do and take care of. So watch out for, for each other and elderly family members or whatever in this heat. Just my little, my little encouragement to, to our community to be community in this situation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Worthout.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. On June 7th, I attended the Thurston Regional Planning Council Meeting. Um, and we had two items that were of interest. We had the first review of the Federal Transit Assessment and the Transit Safety Performance Measures, um, and, uh, reviewed the resolution for 2024, 25, and that'll be back on the agenda on the July meeting. And then we also had a presentation about the Rural Transit Funding and Service Update. Um, didn't realize that it's something that, uh, TRPC, the, uh, the senior planner, um, Amy, uh, um, Winneka, she usually does salmon, uh, work, but she is, um, this is one of her side gigs. And so she's, uh, responsible for the rural transit, and it's just, it's a neat program. And so, and then it serves the Chehalis Reservation, Tumwater, Bucauda, Grand Mound, Rainier, Rochester, Antonino. And so they continue working on grants to help, uh, for continued, um, service and expanded service in the future. And then on the June, let's see, we had an executive meeting on June 24th for the Climate Mitigation Committee. Uh, we received, uh, reports from LOT and PSC. Then we also, uh, discussed our selection for the, uh, 2025 Thurston Climate Mitigation, uh, Climate Regional Initiative that we adopted. And, uh, during our retreat, we had two that had come up, and so, um, that were equally, had equally split on votes. And so then we had another, we were able to have another discussion on our choices. And so they did, uh, choose one, and what it'll result in is a white paper that was going to be, and I'll read that. It's going to be doing a gap analysis for regional and jurisdictional plans and policies that aim to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the transportation sector by reducing vehicle miles traveled. And so they hope to do that in, in conjunction with, uh, the work that we'll be doing on the Comprehensive Plan and hopefully fitting the two together as far as, um, where we have gaps in our services. And we also had a presentation on the 2022 greenhouse gas inventory. And so that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I attended the Funding Governance Work Group sub-cabinet meeting, um, with the consultants for the, uh, estuary restoration effort to discuss the ILA, um, along with yourself, as well as Administrator Parks. Um, I don't have a ton to report on that, other than our discussions are ongoing with the consultants in the work group. And once we've sort of landed on some language that we find agreeable, that the other partners also find agreeable, we'll be having a work session in the fall, likely in September, I think, August, September range. So there will be, um, much, much, much more information to come, but we're still sort of in the finessing of the legalese at this point in time. Um, I also attended the Regional Housing Council Meeting on Wednesday, June 26th. There was a couple items of note for that meeting. Significantly, we passed the, uh, information, our approval of the request of information for the pipeline, um, for the housing recommendations. For folks who aren't super familiar with the process, the pipeline is essentially the list of potential future housing projects that are going to be on the county's funding list for the next couple of years. It's typically a three-year cycle, but we had a pause during COVID while dealing with the myriad of issues that arose from some of the issues with the pandemic. And, uh, so this year, we did the RFI that contains the next three years of pipeline projects. And, uh, next year, then we'll just have one year of pipeline projects. We'll be back on the normal schedule starting next year. Um, all in all, we approved close to, I think, 16 million dollars worth of funding for projects to go on to the pipeline over the next three years, which is, um, fantastic. Our, we need a lot more than that, but any, any help that we can get for more affordable units in the meantime is, uh, tremendous progress. The other thing that I would highlight from that meeting was there was a discussion of hosting a, uh, retreat, really more of a strategic planning session, maybe two half-days in the fall. And I think the purpose of that for the Regional Housing Council is twofold. To talk about, one, the council's role in terms of policy development, making policy recommendations that cities or others could consider in the future. And then, secondly, what is sort of the council's overall role? It's, the council has really sort of existed as a mechanism to make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners about housing projects. I think there is a desire to have a conversation about what a broader role looks like for the council in the future. So we will be, uh, we directed the tech team to make some recommendations to us about what, um, some strategic planning sessions could look like in the fall. And we will have a discussion about that in July. And in our July agenda, we'll also be having a discussion of Grants Pass at that time as well to talk about some of the implications of that decision. Um, that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor. To close out this council meeting, um, I met twice with, uh, T-Hopes. And as you can see, Courtney gave us a great briefing today on the way ahead for T-Hopes. And I can honestly say that I feel that we have a steady, competent leader, ready to do the required work to be, for us to be effective as a coalition. On 18th June, I attended the All-Day Board Retreat for Experienced Olympia and Beyond, where we discussed unveiling of the Thurston County Master, uh, Destination Plan, which Peter was talking about. Things that we must do before we execute this plan is, number one, extensive community engagement. Number two, we call it connectivity, website, and street signage. Number three, tribal relationships and tourism. And number four, workforce development. You can find the plan on their website. It was just posted today. On 27th June, I attended the EMS Committee Meeting. Um, they, there was excellent turnout for, uh, EMT grads. We had 24 graduates, a very big class, and all are in their duty positions. Um, presentations for the lo- location of the next eighth medic unit, which is here in Tumwater, have been presented to all parties. Thurston County Fire Chiefs Association, the Board of County Commissioners, as well as our city council. An MCI drill, which means multiple casualty incident, is underway with the Tumwater Area Drill set for July 12th at 3:00 PM. It will be held at Tumwater Middle School, and invites have gone out to all agencies soliciting resources to participate. And I am done.
Great, thank you very much. All right. With that, with no other business, uh, we are adjourned for the evening, and thank you, everyone.